All right, we'll call the zoning board of appeals for Tuesday, June 1st, 2021 to order. Will the city call the roll, please?
Mr. Wilkins, can you hear us? We can't hear you. I'll call the roll. This is Brianna. Ms. Defoe?
Here.
Ms. Selesny?
Here.
Mr. Wygum?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Friedman? Madam Chair, you have a quorum to conduct business.
Okay, thank you. Are there any communications?
We would just like to announce that the phone number for public comment is 1-415-655-0001, and to use the access code of 173-965-8932.
Okay, thank you. So briefly, let me just describe how this board conducts business if you haven't joined us before. The city will call each case by its case number, read a short description of the case. We ask you to speak up as the appellant at that time. Introduce us with your name and your address, please, and then explain to us what you're asking for and why you're asking for it. And then the city will read a findings of fact. We ask you to agree with those facts or add anything else factual at that time. And then the city will read a staff recommendation. And then we'll turn it over to public comment. If there's anybody on the line that wishes to speak to that case, that would be their opportunity. And then we'll turn it back over to the board to deliberate and possibly ask the appellate questions and make a decision, and then we'll move on to the next case. So, Mr. Wilkins, is your sound up? No, doesn't seem to be. Okay, Brianna, are you prepared to read the case?
Hi, Jody. Yes, I can read the case.
Okay, so we can move to the first case, please.
Okay, so for ZB A case 21-10, the appellant, Joseph Antisapor Schwartz, owners are requesting the following waiver from the board. One, a five-foot variance to the front yard setback to construct a covered front porch. Forty feet required, thirty-five feet proposed. The property is located on the south side of Agnew Street between Greenfield Road and Fairfax Street at 1-5599 Agnew Street, Sidwell Parcel Number 2425-278-006, zoned R3, single-family residential. This appeal is to Section 5.193, Article 22, and Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Great, thank you. Are the appellants here?
Yeah, my name is Zach Ostroff. I'm representing the Schwartzes.
Great, could you state your name or your address for the record, please?
Sure, Zach Ostroff, 2640 Water Oaks Drive, West Bloomfield, Michigan, 48324.
Great, thank you. Could you just describe to us what you're asking for and why, please?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm the architect that do the plans. And essentially, we have a very similar project to one that was before the zoning board last year on Shelley. It's almost identical, same house, colonial. And essentially, the homeowners needed additional space. And right now, their front porch is kind of small. And essentially, we're just pushing out a little bit just to gain a little bit more living space in a covered front porch.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Yes, Jody, I would just want to point out that the appellant we have on file is Joseph Schwartz, the homeowner. And I don't have the paper that authorizes Mr. Ostroff to represent the owner.
I believe all the paperwork was filled out because he was going to be out of town. I don't believe he's even on. I'm looking at the people that are on the Zoom. He's not on there.
Yeah, he just identifies himself, I guess, as the appellant. He does not identify you at all. Generally, we need some sort of authority. Do you think it's possible to get him on the phone?
I can try. Hi, Mrs. Schwartz. This is Zach. Hi, I'm on the Zoom meeting right now. Can you just authorize them to allow me to represent you?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, can you hear this?
I can hear her, yes, thank you.
All right, Mrs. Schwartz, can you just authorize me?
Yeah, so this is Joseph Schwartz. I authorize Zach Ostroff to attend the meeting on our behalf. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, I'll tell you later. Thanks.
We really appreciate it.
Okay. Sorry about that. I thought all the paperwork was already filled out.
Thank you, Mr. Ostroff.
No, no problem.
So, this is Brianna. For case number 21-10, findings of fact. Number one, the appellant, Joseph Antisapor Schwartz, owner is requesting the following waiver from the board. One, a five-foot variance to the front yard setback to construct a covered front porch. Forty feet required, thirty-five feet proposed. The property is located on the south side of Agnew Street between Greenfield Road and Fairfax Street at 1-5599 Shelley Street, Sidwell Parcel 24-25-278-006, zoned R3, single-family residential. The surrounding properties to the north, south, east, and west are zoned R3, single-family residential, and are developed with single-family dwellings in the Kent Field Manor Sub Number 1. Field inspections reveal that surrounding dwelling exteriors are mostly brick with a mixture of various siding materials. The majority of the dwellings in the surrounding area are two-story with a few one-and-a-half and single-story dwellings mixed in. All of the dwellings in this area have attached garages. The homes in the surrounding area were built in the 1960s and range from 1,200 square feet to 2,500 square feet. Along both sides of Agnew Street, to the east and west, all the homes have similar conforming setbacks. Many of the homes in the surrounding area are conforming in setback requirements. The subject home was built in 1965 and is 1,564 square feet in area, constructed with brick and siding exterior. Oh, let me just move this. There we go. The location has two-car attached garage. The site is approximately .185 acres. The appellant is proposing a 577-square-foot second-story addition over the attached garage and 305-square-foot two-story addition to the rear of the residence, which complies with Article 22, Section 5.193 of the zoning ordinance, setbacks and lot coverage. The appellant owner is seeking a waiver of five feet of front yard setback. Forty feet required, thirty-five feet proposed in order to construct a covered front porch with no enclosing sides.
Great, thank you. Do you agree with those facts? And is there anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, I agree with them. The only thing I would like to add is that we're trying to match, you know, exterior materials, brick, you know, to match the existing to make it look more like it was always meant to be there. And again, I just wanted to point out it's almost identical to the one that was came before the zoning board of appeals last year at addresses at 15610 Shelley, which was approved.
All right, thank you. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration of the following waivers for five feet of front yard setback. Forty feet required, thirty-five feet proposed in order to construct a front porch with the following conditions. One, the structure meets all requirements of the building code. Two, that the appellant secures all permits required for proposed construction. Three, that the roof over the porch be supported by three columns, and the porch must remain open and cannot be enclosed. This recommendation is based on the following. One, the open area in the front yard will still be maintained if no enclosing walls are built underneath the porch covering. And two, the reduction in setback is only for a portion of the front of the dwelling.
Great, thank you. Is there anything else before we move to public comment from the appellant? Or are you?
I'm comfortable with what was stated, thank you.
Great, thank you. Brianna, do you have anybody on the public comment line?
There is a call at 248-794. And they are unmuted, so if they wish to speak, they could now.
Hi there, are you here to speak on this case? I'm guessing not, Brianna, so you can put them back on. You?
Okay.
And that's the only person on the line?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so let's close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, the street pretty much has very similar homes. The porches are all, you know, they look like five by nine. They're very small. I can see the intent of the design is to have more of a sitting area for the front and cover it, of course, from the weather. I don't think there's any problem with it extending into the front yard. Five feet, the porch becomes bigger. There's no sidewalls or anything. And actually, if you're using the same materials as Mr. Ostroff said, they probably look like it never happened. So I would be in favor of such a variance of five feet.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Friedman? Oh, I think you're on mute, Mr. Friedman.
I too see no reason why we shouldn't approve this. This, you know, plans look nice. I think I do remember a similar case that we had that plans looked very similar to this one. I got no issue with it with five feet extra from the front yard setback.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Selesny.
Yes, I agree with what I've heard. I happen to be a person that loves her front porch, so I can understand why they would like to expand it a little bit. It's not as user-friendly as it could be with just a small extension, and it will not intrude upon the public space. And I think it's a great idea.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wygum?
Yeah, I have no problem with this. I agree along with the city's recommendation.
Okay, thank you. I agree, I thought for such a major project, this is a pretty minor request of us. So, Ms. Selesny, will you make a motion for us?
Sure. The appellant, Joseph Antisapor Schwartz, owner is requesting the following waiver from the board. A five-foot variance to the front yard setback to construct a covered front porch. Forty feet required, thirty-five feet proposed to the property located on the south side of Agnew Street between Greenfield and Fairfax at 1-5599 Shelley Street, Sidwell Parcel 2425278006, zoned, single-family residential. I move, excuse me, I move that we approve the waiver of the five-foot of front setback with the following conditions.
You know, Ms. Selesny, I'm sorry, I want to interrupt you for just one second. I think there's a misprint in there. The address is actually on Agnew. It's 1-5599, but it's Agnew, not Shelley Street. I just noticed that.
I thought I said Agnew.
I think it reads Shelley, and I think you said Shelley. So, okay, we just want to make sure we got the right address. I mean, definitely got the right parcel.
It's 1-5... Oh, you know what? It says Shelley in line two on the findings of fact.
Right.
1-5599 Agnew.
Great, thank you.
In Southfield. I move that we grant this waiver. The conditions are that the structure meet all requirements of the building code, that the appellant secures all permits required for proposed construction, that the roof over the porch be supported by three columns, and the porch must remain open and cannot be enclosed. This grant is made on the following. That the open area in the front yard will still be maintained if no enclosing walls are built underneath the porch covering, and the reduction in setback is only for a portion of the front of the dwelling.
Great, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
I second.
Thank you, thank you. Will the city call the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Defoe?
Yes.
Ms. Selesny?
Yes.
Mr. Wygum?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
All right, so your request is granted. Please continue to work with the city to get the necessary permits to get your project completed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, will the city call the next case, please?
Yes, for case, ZB A case 21-11, the appellant, Tenenbaum David A. Revocable Trust, owner is requesting the following waiver from the board. Following waivers. One, a waiver of height and number of stories to construct a two-story detached garage. One story, 15 feet in height permitted. Two stories, 18 feet 8 inches in height proposed. Two, a waiver to increase the lot coverage of a legal non-conforming lot. 25% maximum required, 27.33% existing, and 28.97% proposed. The property is located on the west side of Ridge Cliff Street between Hilton Street and Sherfield Place at 25168 Ridge Cliff Street, Sidwell Parcel 24-24-455-008, zoned R2, single-family residential. This appeal is to Section 5.61, subsection 1, Article 2, and Section 5.193, Article 22. I'm going to read that over. This appeal is to Section 5.61, subsection 1, Article 22, and Section 5.193, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Is the appellant here?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
David Tenenbaum, 25168 Ridge Cliff Drive, Southfield, 48075.
Great, thank you. And could you describe to us what you're asking for and why, please?
Yes, we have a garage currently existing. We want to, we're actually, it leaks and everything, so we're going to take it down, just rebuild it and put another story on top. And we wanted to just bring it a little bit more towards the street, a few more feet. Zach Ostroff is the architect, and we want to add another floor on. I'm going to use it for an office space at this point. Because of COVID, it enables me to actually have a place to work and do my consulting.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Yes, findings of fact for case 21-11. The appellant, Tenenbaum David A. Revocable Trust, owner is requesting the following waivers from the board. A, a waiver of height and number of stories to construct a two-story detached garage. One story, 15 feet in height permitted. Two stories, 18 feet 8 inches in height proposed. B, a waiver to increase the lot coverage of a legal non-conforming lot. 25% maximum required, 27.33% existing, and 28.97% proposed. The property is located on the west side of Ridge Cliff Street between Hilton Street and Sherfield Place at 25168 Ridge Cliff Street, Sidwell Parcel Number 24-24-455-008, zoned R2, single-family residential. This appeal is to Section 5.61, Article 22, and Section 5.193, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. The surrounding properties are zoned R2, single-family residential, and are developed with single-family dwellings in the Southfield Village Estates subdivision. Field inspections reveal that surrounding dwellings are mostly single-story with brick exteriors and a mixture of various siding materials. A majority of the dwellings in this area have detached garages with an average lot coverage of 26%. The homes in the surrounding area were built in the 1950s and range from 1,200 square feet to 2,200 square feet. Along both sides of Ridge Cliff Street, I'm just going to pause because I'm getting some background noise. Okay, so I'll resume with number six. Along both sides of Ridge Cliff Street, to the north and south, homes have similar conforming setbacks and non-conforming lot coverage, greater than 25%. A few that have a greater setback with larger lots. Many of the homes in the surrounding area are non-conforming in setback and lot coverage requirement. The subject home was built in 1959 and is 1,902 square feet in area, constructed with brick exterior. The location has an existing 440-square-feet two-car detached garage, which is to be demolished and the proposed garage constructed.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts? And do you have anything else you'd like to add at this point?
The only thing I would add is that the garage right now is actually, the bottom floor is used as a workout area. And it would not interfere with parking in our driveway. We currently could put four cars in our driveway, five cars if we had to. And we could still do the same thing once the garage is just extended a little bit. And like I said, it would give me a place to work and would get me out of my wife's hair if I have any place to do my work.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is to deny the following waiver. A waiver of height and number of stories to construct a two-story detached garage. One story, 15 feet in height permitted. Two stories, 18 feet 8 inches in height proposed. Staff recommendation is to approve the following waiver. A waiver to increase the lot coverage of a legal non-conforming lot. 25% maximum required, 27.33... Oh, I see, okay. A waiver to increase the lot coverage of a legal non-conforming lot. 25% maximum required, 27.33% existing, and 28.9% proposed with the following condition. One, the structure meets all requirements of the building code. Two, that the appellant secures all permits required for proposed construction. And three, that the property is not used for any commercial business use or storage.
Okay, thank you. Does the appellant have anything you'd like to add at this point? Or we can go to public comment?
Yeah, sorry, can I say something?
Sure, assuming you're authorized, seeing as I'm here with you.
I was trying to talk before and I was on mute, so I, yeah. Anyhow, just a little background on this. You know, obviously, we know that there aren't a lot of two-story garages. And if you look at the site plan or the aerial that's on right now on the Zoom, we're conforming, we're staying 10 feet away from, there's like a rear room that kind of projects to the back, which would be to the east. We're staying 10 feet away from that and as well, 10 feet away from the rear of the house. Again, if the height restriction is that we're asking for variance for that, if it was more palatable, you know, we could put a breezeway to connect the, it would be the north side of the new garage, a small breezeway to connect it to the rear of the house. You know, and doing so would be, you know, more of an attached structure, and that variance would go away.
Okay, thank you. Brianna, is there anybody on the public comment line?
I'm going to unmute the 248794 to see if they'd like to speak on this case.
Okay.
Hi, yes, I'm a neighbor on this case. My name is Ben.
Hi, Ben. Did you give us your address?
Yeah, I live at 25240 Ridge Cliff, about three doors from the subject property.
Okay.
And I just want to say that I'm in full support of this construction. I don't have anything to be concerned about. I think it'll be a very nice asset to our neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Brianna, that's the only line on the public comment line?
Yes, that was the only call.
Okay, so we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Wygum, you want to start?
Sure.
There you go.
I drove... Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, I drove around the neighborhood and everything, and that proposal will stand out like a sore thumb. And it is not an attractive structure to me, and it does not fit in with the neighborhood. So I am opposed to the height of that thing. You want to put in a new garage and use the, what the city recommended, I have no problem with that, but I am opposed to the height of this thing, the way it is built.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers?
Driving down the street, you can tell that all the houses are ranch-style houses. You know, a lot of them have the garages in the backyard. Going from 15 feet in height permitted to 18 feet 8 inches may seem like a lot at first, but I don't know if the appearance from the street really will tell that story. I, you know, the house behind the garage has a big adult-sized tree. The concern is that maybe down the road, other people go and ask for, you know, taking down their garages and doing very similar things. I don't know if that's good or bad, but the sign of the times are very large, and sometimes you have to deal with the existing foundation. And maybe we're moving in towards an area where people are spending more money on their own homes as opposed to leaving and buying another home that fits their profile better. There are, you know, I do, I do, I do think that Mr. Wygum's comment is valid, but I think I'm more, more towards the idea of being a little bit more progressive and thinking that I don't have a problem with somebody adding a second story. Three, four feet is not huge. And, you know, using, you know, I mean, people are allowed to have a second story over an attached garage. And yes, they could put a breezeway in there easily and get rid of that situation where they wouldn't require a variance. So I think I would accept this situation only because I think that this is where we're heading in the construction business, and this is where we're heading with people, how they're going to handle their homes. So this is where I stand. I would actually approve this. So, this is where I stand. I, I would actually approve this.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Friedman?
Uh, I, while, while I agree with Mr. Wygum's comments, I, I happen to live, uh, probably a couple, a thousand feet from this, from, uh, around the corner from this, uh, this street. And while Mr. Wygum is exactly right on, on the, the two blocks right there, Prairie and Ridge Cliff, they seem all to be, uh, one-story homes. The, the surrounding area, if you go to Kingshire or Sherfield, um, you know, all, all the homes around there are sort of a mix of, of one-story and two-story homes. And I don't think, uh, uh, you know, two-story structure is, 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 uh, is odd in the neighborhood. It might be on that particular street. Um, and, and again, as, as Mr. Rogers said, the variance is, is, uh, from fifteen to, to eighteen, eighteen-eight. Um, you know, it's not, it's not much of a variance in the fact that, you know, uh, uh, denying it would just require them to, to build a breezeway, which I think would, would look even less attractive. Uh, you know, I don't have an, an issue with it. I think if, 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 if the, uh, what Mr. Wygum said is, it is different from the, from the, you know, none of the, none of the, uh, uh, houses on the block do have a two-story garage or anything like that. Um, you know, if, if, if the neighbors were here saying that they, they, they didn't like, there'd be another story. But I don't, I, I don't think this is unattractive. I don't think, um, it, uh, I, I don't think it, i- it's an issue. It's, it's behind the house. Uh, you know, I, we don't, uh, it's, I don't think the neighbor through the back would have an issue with it. So, I, I don't, I would, I would actually approve both the waivers, um, in this, in this case.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lesny?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to clarify one thing. In the, um, conditions, it says the property is not used for commercial business. I assume that does not include a consulting business.
Or a home office, I would assume would be how it would be classified. Um, do you have customers coming to your consulting business at your home?
No, it's just me.
Okay, I think that's probably the difference, right? If you're like-
I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page on that because I'm assuming it's more like a home office.
Yeah, if you can recommend anybody to me, I wouldn't mind.
Wish I knew someone. I, I, um, I agree with Mr. Friedman and Mr. Rogers. I, it's way back and you really don't see it unless you peer towards the back. And there are on Kingshire and on Sherfield, there are a lot of, uh, second stories, even across the street from them. And the house, actually, my son used to live in, they just did a recent construction. The front looks like it's a one-story, but in the back, it's a two-story. And that's, uh, this kitty corner on Ridge Cliff. So, I think that there's going to be more of this type of thing because the houses, the lot is smaller than we have now, uh, but it's not illegal because that's the way it was when it was built. And, um, I can't see that this would be a problem or an infringement on anyone's, uh, businesses. I would suggest that there's, uh, a lot of mature foliage back there and I would suggest that they trim it back, but keep it because it does, um, serve to shield the, uh, garage.
Okay, thank you. That was actually gonna be one of my questions to the architect, if, you know, what they thought they might need to cut down during the construction.
Can I answer that now, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, there, there's a couple of trees that are in the way. We're, we're kind of pushing the, the new garage a little bit more forward. Um, but I'm sure we're gonna have a, uh, you know, a, a tree, you know, somebody that deals with trees, take a look at that. Just to make sure that the, uh, you know, the foundation doesn't, uh, you know, doesn't, you know, impede anything and, and we won't have any problems with the structure and, you know, vice versa in the future.
Okay, and what about that one? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Tenenbaum.
I was gonna say, yeah, we wanna keep as many, we, we had some dead trees back there. We wanna replant some things. And if you knew my wife, when they were trimming the front and trimming all those trees, she ran out and almost put herself in front and said, "Don't touch the trees." So, we're, we wanna keep as much as possible and actually add some trees in the back.
Okay, and there's no concern about the utility lines? Because those are running back there too, as you rise up, you'll be far below those?
Yeah, we're not, we're, we're actually a little bit inset from the easement, so we shouldn't have any issue with the utility lines.
Okay, and we don't have any setback, back, setback issues?
No, no, we're, we're, we can, we're allowed to go up to the easement. I believe the rear setback is like five feet, but because we have a six easement, and we actually took it away a little, I took it away a little bit further. So, we're, we're about, uh, six and a half to seven feet away from that, that, uh, lot line.
Okay.
Hi, Jody, this is, uh, this is Brianna. Um, sorry to interrupt you.
You're fine.
So, I just, I'm looking at the site plan and it looks like there's thirty-point-two feet and six feet of that is the easement. So, um, in that zoning district, they, I believe they are allowed a thirty-foot setback. I don't think that there should be any problem, um, for the zoning ordinance.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for checking. Okay, um, you know, I was, I was, I was most curious about what it was intend, what its intended use was. And so, certainly, a home office makes a lot of sense. Um, I, I, it said loft, and so I didn't know if there was an allowance for, you know, a livable space up there, but a loft makes, for an office, makes the most sense. And it didn't even dawn on me that that's what it was for. Um, so I, I, I tend to agree with, um, you know, Mr. Friedman and Mr. Rogers that I, I think it probably is a changing of the times. And, you know, once you do it, you might have neighbors, you know, come into the board asking for the same thing, um, because there is a need for more home space and the working world is changing, frankly, so. Um, and I, and I don't like the idea of having to force you into a breezeway to allow for a second story. That seems like a, you know, uh, taking up more of your backyard in an unnecessary manner or possibly parking space. So, um, Mr. Friedman, you wanna take a go at a, a motion for us?
Sure. Uh, uh, the appellant, uh, Tenenbaum David A. Revocable Trust owner is requesting the following waivers from the board. A waiver of height and number of stories to construct a two-story detached garage. One story, fifteen feet in height permitted. Two stories, eighteen feet, eight inches, uh, in height proposed. And, and a waiver to increase the lot coverage of illegal non-conforming lot. Twenty-five percent maximum required, uh, twenty-seven point, uh, thirty-three, uh, percent existing, twenty-eight point nine-seven proposed. The property is located on the west side of Ridge Cliff Street between Hilton and Sherfield Place at two-five-one-six-eight Ridge Cliff Street. Sidwell parcel number two-four-two-four-four-five-five-zero-zero-eight, zoned R-two, single-family residential. Um, the, uh, uh, I move that we, uh, 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 grant the waivers, the, the following waivers, the waiver of the, of the height and number of stories, and the waiver to increase the lot coverage for the, uh, uh, with, with the following additions. That the structure meet all the requirements of the building code. If the appellant secures all the, uh, all the permits required for the construction and, uh, the property, uh, not be used for any commercial business use, uh, uh, or storage. Um, um, and the recommendation is based on the following, that the, uh, um, that the proposed, uh, uh, waiver to increase the, the height and number of stories would not have a negative impact on neighbor properties and that, uh, 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 that the, uh, approval of the lot, the increase in lot coverage of one-point-six-four would have a minimal impact on the properties and, uh, that, uh, uh, the proposed lot coverage is consistent with the current lot coverage of the surrounding properties.
Thank you. Um, can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Uh, well, city-
I would like to wonder if we, maybe we could make another condition that they replace, um, any trees that they take down unless they're diseased or dead. I mean, the ones that they take down are diseased and dreaded. Uh, other ones that are not, that are alive, that should, they should be replaced.
Hi, Jody, uh, this is Brianna. So, um, to Ms. Lesny through the chair, uh, anytime that trees are removed, they do have to go through the planning department through Noreen Kozlowski, the city landscaper, to, um, either replace the amount that's required by ordinance or, um, preserve the trees. So, it will be required through the planning department.
Okay, it will be taken care of then.
If I might, through the chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Sarah. Um, if I might, through the chair to the board. Um, you know, I know on other cases we've had, uh, just added as a condition that the appropriate tree permits will be obtained through the planning department. Uh, just a suggestion.
Okay, Mr. Friedman, do you?
Sure, I'll accept that with the condition that the appropriate, uh, tree permits be obtained from the city.
Okay, and Ms. Lesny? Great, thank you. Thank you. Can the city call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Foe?
Yes.
Ms. Lesny?
Yes.
Mr. Wygum?
No.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Okay, so your request has been granted. Um, again, as per the conditions, you need to continue to work. Your, your architect will work with the building department to secure whatever permits are needed from the building department and the planning department.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Have a good night.
You too.
Thanks. Uh, will the city call the next case, please?
We don't have to cut any trees that we don't have.
Uh, for, for ZBA case twenty-one dash twelve, the appellant's Cory and Tiffany Bell of Bell Event Studio tenants, representing the owner, Baba Fami LLC owner, is requesting the following variance from the board. Variance of twenty-three feet, two and three-eighths inches of east side yard building setback to address illegal non-conforming issue due to a recent property rezoning. Fifty feet required, twenty-six feet, nine and five-eighths inches existing. The property is located at the northeast corner of Ten Mile Road and Groden Drive at two-four-six-two-four West Ten Mile Road. Sidwell parcel two-four-two-zero-four-five-one-zero-two-one, zone B-two planned business. This appeal is to section five point one-nine-four, article twenty-two, chapter forty-five of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Great, thank you. Hi, is the appellant here?
Yes, hi, this is Tiffany.
Hi, Tiffany, could you state your, um, full name and address for the record, please?
Yes, um, you need my business address?
That'd be fine.
Okay, I'm Tiffany Bell and the address is two-four-six-two-four West Ten Mile Road, Southfield, Michigan, four-eight-zero-three-three.
Great, thank you. Um, could you also explain to us what you're asking for and why, please?
Sure, I believe my architect is on the line and they would be able to go into better detail in terms of what was needed.
Sure, that's fair. Can you just identify them for us?
Sure, that would be Jason.
Oh, my, my, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, my name's, uh, Jason Fleischman from Expressive Architects at eighteen-six-two-zero West Ten Mile Road, suite two-twenty, Southfield, Michigan. And, uh, basically, uh, what we're asking for is a side yard setback variance due to the fact that when we rezoned the property for the new use, uh, it created a non-conforming setback of the existing building. We're not expanding the building. We're not making any changes really to the site or anything around there. It's just the zoning, when we, when the zoning change was approved, it created this issue.
Okay, thank you. Uh, will the city read the findings of fact, please?
For ZBA case twenty-one dash twelve, the appellant's Cory and Tiffany Bell of Bell Event Studio tenants, representing the owner, Baba Sammy LLC, is requesting the following variance from the board. A variance of twenty-three feet, two and three-eighths inches of east side yard building setback to address illegal non-conforming issue due to a recent property rezoning. Fifty feet required, twenty-six feet, nine and five-eighths inches existing. The property is located at the northeast corner of Ten Mile and Groden Drive at two-four-six-two-four West Ten Mile Road. Sidwell parcel two-four-two-zero-four-five-one-zero-two-one, zone B-two planned business. Uh, the subject property is developed with a former vacant bank building. The properties to the north and east are zoned B-two planned business and are developed with the Talex Plaza and Ten Tel Plaza Shopping Centers respectively. The properties to the south across Ten Mile Road and west across Groden Drive are zoned RM multiple-family low-rise and are developed with the Autumn Ridge Condominiums and Pine Ridge Apartments. The site contains one-point-zero-three acres of land with two-hundred feet of frontage on Ten Mile Road and a depth of two-hundred-and-eighteen feet along Groden Drive. The approved site plan indicates the conversion of the former bank building to an assembly hall event venue use. Several site upgrades were required as part of the site plan approval, including parking lot repairs and restriping, bike rack installation, barrier-free upgrades, pedestrian connection to Groden Drive and landscaping improvements. Parking required for the property is thirty-nine spaces with forty-one spaces proposed and the building elevations will remain unchanged. The approved landscape plan indicates the renovation of the existing lawn, retention and pruning of all existing trees, and addition of fifty-six evergreen shrubs with re-mulched beds. As part of the change in use, the property obtained a rezoning from ERO Education Research Office to B-two planned business, which is more consistent with the surrounding property zoning to the north and east. In rezoning the property to B-two, the east side yard setback became more non-conforming. The existing structure on the property is already non-conforming in terms of east side yard setback, even under the standards of the ERO Education Research Office zoning district. The original site plan approved in nineteen seventy-four and constructed in nineteen seventy-five indicated the proper side yard setback of thirty feet and it is unclear how and when the non-conformity was created. East side yard setbacks in the B-two planned business district are to be equal to the height of the building, but no less than fifty feet. Even though a separate parcel, the subject property functions as part of the overall Ten Tel, Talex Shopping Center development with reciprocal parking and driveway ingress egress agreements with the properties to the north and east. The proposed event venue is likely to have less traffic than the former bank use, especially during daytime hours when the shopping center hours, shopping center stores are most active.
Great, thank you. Um, does the appellant agree with those facts? Or is there anything else, uh, you'd like to add at this time?
No, that would be it.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff's recommendation is to approve based upon the following. The variance request is expected to have minimal adverse effects on the surrounding properties. The property functions as one overall development with the properties to the north and east due to reciprocal access and parking agreement, agreements with driveway access between all three properties. In addition, the proposed event venue use is likely to have less traffic than the former bank use, especially during daytime hours when the shopping centers are most active. The property rezoning to B-two planned business, which increased the required minimum side yard setback from thirty feet to fifty feet, as opposed to the former ERO Education Research Office zoning designation, is more consistent with the surrounding property zonings. The existing building has been non-conforming in terms of side yard building setbacks for more than forty-five years. Additionally, the existing building will not be closer to the east property line than what currently exist, exists. The approved site plan addresses maintenance items, pedestrian connectivity, bike rack installation, barrier-free compliance, and landscape upgrades, which will bring, bring the site up to current zoning ordinance standards as well as improve the aesthetics of the site. And the variance as requested is in keeping with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance.
Great, thank you. Um, Brianna, is there anybody on the public comment line?
Hi, Jody, it's Brianna. No, we do not have anyone on for public comment.
Okay, so then we will open and close public comment very quickly and move on to the board. Uh, Mr. Friedman?
Uh, I don't have an issue with it. I mean, I, having an empty building and they're not actually changing anything, uh, being used for a new business. Um, I can't imagine why I would have to, uh, not approve of it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lesny?
Um, I agree.
Okay, Mr. Wygum?
Uh, I have a question about the, uh, parking. Is the forty-one spaces proposed, are they in front of the building? Uh, no, uh, there's about half of them are in front. A little over half are in front and on the side and then, uh, fifteen are behind. It's still on our property, but it is-
If I might, through the chair to Mr. Wygum, this is Sarah. Um, the, there is existing prop, or parking along Ten Mile and also some facing Groden on the south and west sides of the building. They're at-
They're adding one row of parking on the north side of the building near the north property line. But the parking that's facing Ten Mile and Groden is already there and it will, it will continue to exist.
Well, I drove behind the building and there's a little, a small little lane where they had a drive through for the bank. And it's very, very small and I don't see any parking back there besides that. You have to drive that way to get down into the big Talex parking area. So my question was, is there enough parking on the side and front to make the thirty-nine spaces?
If I might through the chair to Mr. Weigum, they are in compliance with, we look at the entire site. They have the proper number of parking spaces on the entire site. And again, some of those spaces along the north property line will be added, fifteen spaces. So, but they're all on the property and it's in conformance with the zoning ordinance requirements for parking.
And I don't know, Mr. Weigum, are you on the computer? I don't know if you can see the image that's up right now, but it shows, yeah. So it shows that they're actually outside of that little barrier and that drive-through lane. So like Sarah's saying, the north end is kind of outside of that drive-through lane.
Well, I hope so because if they're saying we have an event or something and we're going to have to use the Talex over there, there's very little room. I mean, that's exactly the way they have to get there is in the back of the building.
Yeah, and it looks like their property line goes a ways into that parking lot.
All right, it looks to me like there's a wall there, but maybe they can move it. I don't know, I don't have any problem with the reuse of the building and it sounds like a good plan. My only worry was parking. If the city is looked at and if the city is satisfied with that than I am.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers, did I, I don't think I called you yet.
No, you haven't. I would say that I used to bank there, it was a citizen's bank, I think, last, and I think that, I don't have a problem with the variance they're asking because they're obviously having it rezoned. And I think that the landscaping that they're going to be offering is the various they have to do for stability are going to make that far more attractive in appearance than what's there right now. So I would approve this.
Okay, and I also, I don't have a problem with, it's almost like housekeeping. Unfortunately, it's a, we're the last step in the housekeeping plan to keep, to get this property in compliance so you can get open. So I also support it. So Mr. Rogers, will you make a motion for us?
Yes. Hang on. Yeah, in the matter of case, ZBA case twenty-one dash twelve, the appellant Cory and Tiffany Bell of Bell Event Studio tenants representing the owner Baba Sammy LLC owner is requesting the following variance from the board. A variance of twenty-three feet, two and three eighths inches of east side yard building setback to address illegal nonconforming issue due to a recent property rezoning. Fifty feet required, twenty-six feet, nine and five eighths inches existing. The property is located at the northeast corner of Ten Mile Road and Groden Drive at two four six two four West Ten Mile Road. Sidwell Parcel twenty-four twenty dash four five one dash zero two one, Zone B two Plan Business. I make a motion to approve this variance for this rezoning. And I base it upon the following. Number one, the variance request is expected to have minimal adverse effect on the surrounding properties. The property functions as one overall development with the properties to the north and east due to reciprocal access and parking agreements with driveway access between all three properties. In addition, the proposed event venue use is likely to have less traffic than the former bank use, especially during daytime hours when the shopping centers are most active. Number two, the property rezoning to B two Plan Business, which increased the required minimum side yard setback from thirty feet to fifty feet as opposed to the former ERO Education Research Office zoning designation is more consistent with the surrounding properties. Number three, the existing building has been nonconforming in terms of side yard building setback for more than forty-five years. Additionally, the existing building will not be closer to the east property line than what currently exists. Number four, the approved site plan addresses maintenance items, pedestrian connectivity, bike rack installation, barrier free compliance and landscape upgrades, which will bring the site up to current zoning ordinance standards as well as improve the aesthetics of the site. And lastly, the variance as requested is in keeping with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Will the city call the roll?
This is Brianna. Mr. Foe?
Yes.
Ms. Lesney?
Yes.
Mr. Weigum?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Your request is granted. Please move forward, working with the building department, the planning department, everybody else you've been working with to to get everything going and get yourself open. So good luck.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, will the city call the next case, please?
For ZBA case twenty-one dash thirteen, the appellant Roger Share of MT Apartments LLC owner is requesting the following variance from the board. Variance of two feet of building height, twenty-five feet permitted, twenty-seven feet proposed. The property is located on the west side of Franklin Road between Franklin Point Drive and Matrot Street at two eight three four five through two eight three nine three Franklin Road. Sidwell Parcels two four one eight, two seven seven, zero zero four, zero zero five, zero four two and zero four four, zoned RMM multiple family medium rise and RT attached single family residential. This appeal is to section five point one nine three, Article twenty-two, Chapter forty-five of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Great, thank you. Is the appellant here?
Yes, I am.
Hi there, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
Roger Share, three one three hundred Orchard Lake Road, Farmington Hills, Michigan.
Great, thank you. If you could just describe to us what you're asking for and why, please?
Sure, good evening. I'm seeking a two-foot variance under Article six, Section five point seven six three. With the height of the new townhomes we're planning to construct, the townhomes are configured in a series of five buildings with a total of twenty-six units. The new buildings, the new units are intended as an expansion of the existing Maple Tree multi-family community.
I'm having a hard time hearing, there's an echo in there.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
So if anybody's not speaking, if you could please mute your phone, that will help. Thank you.
Okay, the new units are intended as an expansion of the existing Maple Tree community to the south on this screen. The reason for the request is severalfold. First, the hardship we face is based in part on the decision to include basements in these units, in these buildings. Since our engineer recommended that based on the conditions of the site, in order to develop the site most efficiently and balance the earthwork, he suggested we include basements in these buildings, which initially we're not going to do. And now with soil tests, analysis and further engineering on the site, we're finding that the decision to include basements is partly responsible for the increased height of these buildings. Second, we face a severe hardship in trying to compete in today's rental market with less than optimal design. We're trying to compete in a market where many typical buildings have eight-foot ceilings on slab. To compete, we designed our buildings with nine-foot ceilings and now with basements, we'll be able to compete very effectively with features, building characteristics that will distinguish this community in the market. Restricting our height to twenty-five feet will cause us to construct buildings with suboptimal design and without the features that we think are necessary to compete effectively. And finally, I'd like to note that we're very close to the twenty-five foot height limitation on our buildings. RT zoning, the zoning category we're in, is a transition zoning area. And we're very, and we understand very well the goal in this transition zoning category, to limit the height to measure below thirty feet allowed in multifamily districts. At twenty-six feet eleven inches, our buildings are designed with just over twenty-five feet limitation. And therefore, we believe we're very sensitive to the height restriction and we meet the spirit and intent of the RT zoning classification. Mark Yapanath from Bogarts Associates, our architect, is also on the call today and would be glad to answer you for the questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything you'd like, anything you'd like to add at this time? Okay, all right, sounds good. So will the staff read the finding facts, please?
For ZBA case twenty-one dash thirteen, the appellant Roger Share of MT Apartments LLC owner is requesting the following variance from the board. A variance of two feet of building height, twenty-five feet permitted, twenty-seven feet proposed. The property is located on the west side of Franklin Road between Franklin Point Drive and Matrot Street at two eight three four five through two eight three nine three Franklin Road. Sidwell Parcel two four one eight, two seven seven, zero five nine, recently combined from two four one eight, two seven seven, zero zero four, zero zero five, zero four two and zero four four, zoned RMM multiple family medium rise and RT attached single family residential. The existing site is currently under construction with the Maple Tree Town Home Project. The properties to the north and across Matrot Street are zoned RT attached single family, RMM multiple family medium rise and R one single family residential and are developed with the Franklin Apartments and three single family homes fronting Matrot Street. The properties to the south are zoned RT attached single family and R one single family residential and are developed with the Stone Brook condominiums and three single family homes fronting Matrot Street. The properties to the east across Franklin Road are Zone B one Neighborhood Business and OS Office Service and are developed with the Promenade Plaza Shopping Center facing Northwestern Highway, a general medical office building facing Northwestern Highway and an office park fronting Franklin Road. The properties to the west across Matrot Street are zoned R one and R four single family residential and contain detached site condominiums within the Villas of Pebble Creek and Tyler Two and Four Developments. The site contains sixteen point nine acres of land and is irregularly shaped with approximately six hundred and two feet of frontage on Franklin Road and a combined total of one thousand one hundred and eight feet of side yard frontage on Matrot Street. The approved site plan indicates the construction of twenty-six two-story townhome units within five buildings. The need for the two feet of additional building height is due to the fact that all townhome units are now proposed to have basements as opposed to being constructed on slab as originally designed. Due to the addition of basements, all model types of townhomes are proposed to exceed the twenty-five foot maximum permitted height as indicated. The townhome elevations reflect varying peaks and gables resulting in roof lines alternating between twenty-six and twenty-seven feet. The original approved design reflects a continuous roof line of twenty-five feet extending across all buildings. The benefits of incorporating basements to the developer is twofold. It provides an additional amenity to renters who desire storage and it generates fill dirt for use by the developer and balancing and grading the site during and after construction. The variance requested is minimal and will provide a negligible difference in viewing from neighboring properties.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts and do you have anything else to add at this point?
Yes, we agree.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff's recommendation is for favorable consideration of the variance request based upon the following. The height variances requested are minimal in nature and are not expected to have adverse effects on the surrounding properties. There will not be a noticeable difference or impact on the open space or light for neighboring properties. The proposed varying roof line is aesthetically favorable as opposed to the consistent single roof line and meets the intent of the RT attached single family district in providing transition between single family and standard multifamily developments.
Okay, thank you. Brianna, do we have anybody on the public comment line?
Hi Jody. No, we do not have anyone on hold for public comment.
Okay, so we will move past public comment and open it up to the board. Mr. Friedman?
I don't have any, have any issue with it. You know, it's two feet and as the staff recommendation says, well, that's pretty, pretty minimal. You know, in terms of the surrounding properties, there's only those three houses that I could imagine theoretically having an interest, you know, the same owner owns the, owns the other buildings that would be near it. I think these, this plan sounds more attractive than the twenty-five foot on a slab design, so I'm in favor of it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lesney. Oh, I think you're on mute.
Oh.
There you go. Nope. Hold on, you're on mute again. Either on or off, I can.
Okay, how's that?
There you go. Now I hear you.
Okay, I am in favor of this. There have been several complexes over the years that have come with, to us with very similar requests. And sometimes when I'm out and about, I will drive by to see how it actually came to fruition and whether what we expected was actually there or if we were disappointed in how it came out. And into, for every complex, it's been very positive. And I think that this is a positive design change as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers?
I agree with staff's recommendations and also all of the reasons that were just mentioned by our zoning board members.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Weigum?
The hardest, hardest thing I had with it was trying to get back there, wandering around in the wrong, wrong area.
All right, I also do not have any, you know, issues with this design. I think it's a very nice looking design and I can definitely understand why people would want basements if they're living in a townhome. It could be transitional, you know, moving for them as well where they're moving out of a house and into a townhome and certainly have more stuff than, than will fit. So, Mr. Weigum, will you make a motion for us?
Sure. In regard to ZB case twenty-one thirteen, the appellant Roger Share of MIT Apartments LLC owner requesting the following variance from the board. A variance of two feet of building height, twenty-five feet permitted, twenty-seven feet proposed. The property is located on the west side of Franklin Road between Franklin Point Drive and and Matrot Street at two eight three four five, two eight three nine three Franklin Road. Sidwell Parcel two four one eight dash two seven seven dash zero five nine, recently combined from number two four one eight dash two seven seven dash zero zero four dash zero zero five dash zero four two and zero four four. Zone multiple family medium rise and attached single family residential. I moved it, we grant this waiver based on the following, that the height variance requested are minimal in nature and are not expected to have adverse effect on the surrounding properties. There will not be a noticeable difference or impact on the open space or light for neighboring properties. The proposed varying roof line is aesthetically favorable as opposed to a consistent single roof line and meet the intent of the RT attached single family district in providing transition between single family and standard multifamily development.
Great, thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Will the city call the roll, please?
Mr. Foe?
Yes.
Ms. Lesney?
Yes.
Mr. Weigum?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers? Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
All right, your request is granted. Please continue to work with the city to secure whatever permits are necessary to get your project completed. We'll look forward to seeing its building. It looks like they're, they're ready.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too.
All right, so that closes our public hearings and looks like we have a set of minutes from May fourth. And I thought they looked pretty darn good. I thought that was a, a rough meeting with a lot of negotiation, but I actually did not identify any changes. Anybody else find anything? I mean, there's a few in audibles, but not that I thought changed the intent of anything.
Looks okay to me.
I move that we approve the minutes from, of Tuesday, May fourth, twenty twenty-one, as presented.
I second.
Okay, great. Did, did we get a second? I'm sorry.
We did.
Okay, thank you. Will the city call the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Defoe?
Yes.
Ms. Selesny?
Yes.
Mr. Wygum?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Okay, so the minutes for May fourth are approved. Discussion of our next meeting on June fifteenth. Looks like we don't have any cases, so can I have a motion to cancel the meeting for June fifteenth?
I will make that motion.
All right, thank you. Can I have a second? Thank you. Will the city call the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Defoe?
Yes.
Ms. Selesny?
Yes.
Mr. Wygum?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
And Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Okay, so the meeting for the fifteenth is canceled, so when does that put our next meeting? July sixth, is that right?
This is Brianna, so to Ms. Defoe, the next meeting scheduled is July sixth, and the deadline for that is this coming Monday, June seventh. I have not spoke to anyone, so there's nothing in the works right now. But if something changes, you, either, if we do have cases, you know, well, you'll get the invitation. But if we don't have anyone apply, I'll send everyone an email just so you guys know what's going on.
Okay, that sounds good. Any other miscellaneous from anyone? Okay, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
One, one thing before we adjourn, this is last. How many of you folks were able to use the format? I mean, I'm just on the phone. Is, is most everybody on the phone or not?
You and Mr. Rogers are on the phone and Ms. Selesny, Mr. Friedman and I and the staff are on the computer.
You, you guys are the experts.
Well, Mr. Wygum, I gotta tell you, I, I have never had any problems before, but this time when I did try to get in, there was that step where it had the preview and it had me then join the meeting. It kind of sat there forever. I just closed it and tried again and it worked, so I did have problems, but.
Well, when I, when I try to go to do it, it says that I have to join some outfit first. And I never had to do that before. So I don't know what, it, it could be, it's probably me, I don't know.
I usually put in my name, type in my name, and then hit join, and then it says join now. That's usually the steps I go through.
Yeah, I think you're using a different computer, Mr. Wygum, than you did before the, the other times?
No.
Because the first time it did need some installation.
Well, when I, when I go join, it says, great. Now, please join this outfit and this outfit. It can only be a one-time deal if you want, you know, this kind of stuff. And I, I never had to do that before and I, I just, I don't understand it.
Through the, through the chair to Mr. Wygum, this is Brianna. I know this is the second week in a row that you've had trouble logging in. So what I can do is reach out to Wendell Gramlich tomorrow by email and maybe get like a step-by-step how-to from him. That way you're not having problems in the future. Just because I haven't heard if these meetings are going to go back to council chambers, so we don't want you to continue calling in if you don't have to.
Well, look, if we go back to the council chambers, then I'll log on here. How does that sound?
I think that would work.
Oh, that's funny. All right, so anything else? Anybody have anything else?
No, except that's everybody be safe out there.
Absolutely, continue to be safe. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, everybody, have a good night.